Representative Gattin.
Mr. Chair, I'd like the move is still on pass.
Move by Representative Gattin, second by Representative Sanderson ought to pass. Any discussion on the pending motion? Seeing no discussion, then without objection, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion ought to pass, please raise your hand. All right. All opposed?
I wasn't ready yet.
Oh. All right, all in favor. So, all in favor, put your hand up.
Okay.
All right, all opposed?
Okay.
All right. All right. Then, um... Twenty-three, we'll jump to LD thirty-five. This is an act to allow qualifying patients to use medical marijuana in a hospital. And I'll say, before we jump fully into this, I just want to say that we're... There's... This is a bill... As a sponsor of the bill, there's a lot that we're working on in this, and I don't think we're going to be ready to vote on this today. But we can... But if we look on this test based on where we are, and, um... Great. All right.
Great, so LD thirty-five, an act to allow a qualifying patient to use medical marijuana in a hospital. This bill adds hospitals to the list of eligible primary caregivers for qualifying patients, add hospitals to the universe of medical facilities where qualifying patients may use and store forms of smokeless prepared marijuana, and eliminates the ability of these medical facilities to prohibit or restrict the use or storage of smokeless prepared marijuana by a qualifying patient. And so, essentially, what it does is add hospitals to the list of primary caregivers, and then, um, the ripple effects of that throughout the statute where it says, "hospital provider or nursing facility," it adds "or hospital" to the end of that list as well. And then, um, in section five of the bill, in... In section twenty-four, twenty-three A, the last sentence there is stricken, which has the effect of eliminating the ability for hospice providers and nursing facilities to prohibit or restrict the use or storage of prepared marijuana by a qualifying patient.
I'll just say, uh, on this, we are... I've been working with some of the stakeholders on this, talking about some, uh, potential amendments, uh, and we're still working on some of the details. There's obviously some very sensitive things in here, and we want to make sure we're both balancing the... We're balancing the needs of patients with... While also doing everything we can to mitigate the risks for hospitals. So, we're still working on that, and we're not going to be ready for a vote on this today. There's some very delicate things in here. We need to make sure that we kind of get as near as perfect as possible. So, um, any discussion or... Or otherwise, I would entertain a motion at table. Senator Hassel?
I'll move to the side of the table, Mr. Chair.
All right. The move... Is there a second? All right, uh, move by, uh, Senator Hassel, second by Representative Percy, and table on LD thirty-five. All in favor of the motion at table, please raise your hand. All right. All opposed? All right, I have a table. Moving along, we'll go to LD two sixty-six, an act to allow access for law enforcement officers to the list of registered primary caregivers for medical marijuana patients.
Okay, so LD, um, two twenty... Two sixty-six, um, again, an act to allow access for law enforcement officers to the list of registered primary caregivers for medical marijuana patients. This bill permits the disclosure of the Department of Health and Human Services' list of registered caregivers for medical marijuana patients in a law enforcement official's jurisdiction to allow the law enforcement official to rule out a registered primary caregiver when verifying reports of criminal activity. Uh, and if you turn to page nineteen of the engrossed packet, you can see that this language is included, um, in the... Towards the bottom of page nineteen, and this is under the registry identification card section and the subsection dealing with confidentiality. And so, that section would now read, um, and its subsection... Or its paragraph G, "Records maintained by the department pursuant to this chapter that identify applicants for a registry identification card, registered patients, registered primary caregivers, and registered patients' medical providers are confidential and may not be disclosed except as provided in this subsection and as follows." And then, if you go down to, um, part five, it reads, "To a law enforcement official for verification purposes, the records may not be disclosed further than necessary to achieve the limited goals of a specific investigation." And then, the new language adds, "Except that a list of the registered primary caregivers in a law enforcement official's jurisdiction may be disclosed to assist a law enforcement official in ruling out a caregiver when verifying reports of criminal activity." Um, so that is the change that's made there, and I wanted to, um... And if at any point the committee would like me to summarize the testimony from that bill, I'd be happy to do that. That's provided in the salmon packet. The one thing I wanted to point out on page three of the salmon packet was that there was a request made by the sponsor during the public hearing, and he stated, "I respectfully request that the committee direct the department through this legislation or a formal letter to respond to any and all legitimate law enforcement inquiries about the status of a registered patient within a twenty-four hour time period." So, that was the request that was made by the sponsor at the public hearing, and so I wanted the committee to be aware of that.
Discussion? So, I know, um... I appreciate the place of concern that I think the legislators intend is coming from on this. I don't necessarily know if this is the right way to accomplish it, but I know... You know, I know of cases where, you know, there have been questions about whether or not some, you know, someone who's operating is actually operating as a legally restricted caregiver, which I... Yeah, I know of questions that have even occurred in the district where lack of access to that information created suspicions unnecessarily. That being said, I don't know all of that. This is the way to do it. But I believe the sponsor has... Representative Heimerson, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you. So, this is in my... Came from my district, and we have had conversations back and forth about this. And knowing that it is accessible to them, the police chief from York, where this problem arose, feels comfortable with the access to the information, but would request that there's a twenty-four hour period, um, to gather the information. So, uh, even a strong letter, not to pass with a strong letter would be okay, in absence of a twenty-four hour.
So...
So, whatever we want to think about that is...
So, that would be a letter requesting that the department respond within twenty-four hours to request for the registration status of individual caregivers with one request?
Yes, that's already there. That information's already in...
Okay.
And they feel comfortable accessing it. They just want to be able to know that there's a quick turnaround time and a strong letter.
Okay. Good, great. Representative Sanderson?
The only problem I could see with that, and I think we would need to accommodate for that, is we can...
So, on business days? Okay. All right. Then, hearing that, unless there's any additional discussion, I'll entertain a motion. So... Representative... Sorry, what was that? Representative Heimerson, would you like to make the motion?
Then, I'd like to make the motion ought not to pass.
All right. Is there a second? So, moved in second by Representative Heimerson, and Senator Hassel ought not to pass?
With a letter. Oh, yeah, with a letter.
With a letter.
A strong letter.
All right. Fully noted. Any discussion on... Any discussion on the pending motion? Seeing no discussion, then without objection, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion ought not to pass with a strong letter? Please raise your hand. Right.
I'll use lots of exclamation points in the letter.
And, yeah, you use all caps when you... Next would be seven twenty-six, but seven twenty-six, I think we'd like to look at seven twenty-six in the context of twelve fifty-eight. So, we're going to skip to seven fifty-two. This is an act permit medical marijuana cultivation by incapacitated adults. Apparently, I don't have my computer, but I remember it was in the desk. All right, thank you. So, please, so we can take this away whenever we'd like.
Thank you. Uh, so, LD seven fifty-two, an act to permit medical marijuana cultivation by incapacitated adults. This bill allows a qualifying patient under the medical... Our main medical use of marijuana act, who is an incapacitated adult, to possess marijuana and cultivate marijuana for that incapacitated adult's own use. Um, and so, this is reflected, um, in section twenty-four, twenty-three dash A, subsection one, on page four of the engrossed document, and, um, it says, uh, under subsection one, "Except as provided in twenty-four, twenty-six, a qualifying patient including an incapacitated adult may..." And then, grants them the same rights as other, um, qualifying patients as far as authorized contact, uh, conduct for the medical use of marijuana. Um, and then, it defines, um, at the end, as using the subsection, incapacitated adult has the same meaning as in section thirty-four, seventy-two, subsection ten. And so, um, that's... That's what this bill does.
All right. Any discussion? Or anyone would like to hear from on this? Representative Percy?
I just would like the... What does it say? Does it say that if I'm an incapacitated adult, I can grow up to six plants for myself? Is that correct? Right? If there's somebody that would speak to that?
Yeah, if you'd like that to come up.
So, the patient is allowed to have twelve plants in vegetation and six plants while on.
But you have to have a card?
Yes.
You have to have that. Okay.
Senator Hassel? Representative Percy, your mic is still on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I did read the definition of incapacitated adult, which is known by recent mental illness, deficiency, physical or listed disability, to the extent that they have either sufficient understanding or capacity to make or communicate responsible decisions concerning that person, or to the extent they can effectively manage or apply that individual's estate to necessary ends. And the concern for me is that this may be a population that is easily exploited, and I have some concerns about, uh, what those individuals might face.
Could we change her from Hillary Lister to...
So, I raise that as a, uh, you know, something that I'd like to have thought through as the committee goes forward. I don't know that I need more information, but maybe some.
Good afternoon. So, just addressing some of those concerns, because I definitely do recognize that it's a population of people that could face exploitation, and I don't know if there should be some language added to specify maybe if it was in conjunction with their caregiver or their legal guardian. My mother's legal guardian, she is an incapacitated adult. Yeah, I would lose my guardianship if I did something to put her at risk like that, potentially, if I was putting her in a dangerous situation or doing illegal activity. But it is a situation where, as a guardian, you can't necessarily be there full-time cultivating the plant if someone is a patient. This would allow them to do it, so I don't know if language maybe specifying if it was in conjunction with the guardian or caregiver could maybe address some of those concerns?
Could be open to that language. Thank you. Will Senator Hassel then up, Representative Percy?
Thank you. That incapacitated adult in the current law is able to define somebody that they want to be their caregiver who can grow for them.
Right.
That's correct, but they cannot access the plants themselves. Only the caregiver can have access to the cultivation site as the law is written.
So, she can grow up water the plants.
Representative Percy?
Yeah, um, you know, I'm aligned with the intent and concern about the language, but it... The bill in front of us refers back to a current statutory definition of incapacitated adult. And that definition says it's a person who lacks sufficient understanding or capacity to communicate responsible decisions. So, again, you know, I... That's a... I mean, this is the definition that's used in the Adult Protection Services, that you put a person with mental illness or other disability under guardianship. So, I mean, I think that the intent of this bill is really good, and I think if we can work this language a little bit, you know, maybe we can get to a place where I'm comfortable. But that definition is really what gives me pause, um, to this list there. So, so, um, again, I'm open to suggestions too about how to fix this, because I think I agree with what it's trying to accomplish here.
Representative... Senator Crawford? Representative Gattin, your mic. Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I support both Senator Hassel, Representative Gattin's concerns, and the department as well, where we indicated this clearly is safety. Quick work on alignment, I think, would be most appropriate.
Representative Sanderson?
Could we perhaps have Mr. Albert from the department come up? Maybe he can share some...
Thank you, Mrs. Listern.
...information with us?
Could address this issue, um, and the concern of exploitation with the department. It's very much agree or agrees with. If the definition of enclosed lock facility, those who have access to an enclosed lock facility, could be amended to authorize an incapacitated person with... Because the regulations already allow for a caregiver to assist an incapacitated person in the purpose of cultivating marijuana, but if we amend the access of the cultivation location to allow the incapacitated person with their caregiver to access the location, the department would not object to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would that... Could we hear from... Ms. Lister? Would that...
I think that would address it, as long as they could have access when the caregiver is a registered or a guardian is registered or... But I guess that would be my question, as long as you might be accompanied by the guardian. And that's the complication.
If we're going to have a conversation, could you cover the mic?
We thought you were just going to nod your head.
I'd wait to hear you about all the people back home who worry you're late, listening in.
Thank you. So, my only concern with the language proposed is that it would specify the caregiver had to accompany the incapacitated adult into the cultivation site if, in the case of my mother, she's able to take care of herself on a daily basis on her own, you know, when I am gone. So, if there's some provision to allow that patient access to the cultivation site without having to be accompanied by the guardian at all times, I don't know if that's possible. I do think that suggestion is definitely the right direction.
Representative Sanderson?
Would it be... Trying to find the middle ground here, because, I mean, incapacitating... incapacitated adult could go for someone who does have a level of independence such as Ms. Lister's mother to someone who is completely dependent upon. And I think those are the individuals who the department is certainly trying to protect. I'm wondering if there is a way to, without too much complication, find that middle ground to accommodate those folks with a level of independence who still fall under parts of the incapacitated adult definition, but maybe not all.
Representative Gattin?
And again, I mean, there's no magic to grabbing the definition of incapacitated adult in the current statute. I mean, I think that... I think what I do is come up with our own definition of what an incapacitated adult is, and... And figure it out.
Representative Percy?
I have a question here, and it may be from Mr. Albert. And this, not quite incapacitated adult, but it says in 2012, the DHHS made a rule change to prohibit a patient whose physicians have recommended medical marijuana cultivating their own plants. So, you can be incapacitated, but you can't be, you know... I'm not quite sure. It seems like if you were a patient, you should be able to grow your own, and if you're incapacitated, you might be able to grow your own too. So, I'm not sure what that whole paragraph means.
So, a significant concern is, well, even last year, we saw some television footage of some individuals who were stealing marijuana. A gentleman who was in a wheelchair was cultivating his own marijuana, so he couldn't protect his crop. He was not incapacitated. He was physically incapacitated, but he was not determined incapacitated. The department's concern is if you're having, by definition, an incapacitated individual, they can't protect themselves necessarily from... So, while you may be able to grow up water the plants, if somebody wants to follow you in there, you're not going to be able to be able to protect yourself or your plants or the crop. And so, you've got diversion issues, and you've got physical violence issues that the department's concerned about.
So, well, I get that with the incapacity, but if this is about patients that weren't incapacitated? It's a made a rule change to prohibit a patient whose physician recommended... Right? It didn't say anything about that.
The rule change was specifically around incapacity, I can assure you. I'm not sure if this language is incorrect, but I can't even find the language you're saying.
It was the list of four, the paragraph of the testimony, both of Representatives Delphi's testimony, but that's what it said in...
Representative Sanderson?
So, a gentleman who's in a wheelchair is... Someone commits crime against him, and he's in a wheelchair. So, as a result of that, he's no longer able to cultivate. So, he gets punished? It's... I mean, that's kind of how that appears to me.
No, no, no. He can still cultivate if he wants to. There's no prohibition against that. You know, he's... He can... He probably is already, as a matter of fact. But an incapacitated person by definition cannot, under the current law, in the current regulation, regulatory scheme, grow.
But do you agree there may be a different levels of incapacitation? And maybe we should be looking at that, because there certainly are some individuals who, such in the case of Ms. Lister's mom, is probably capable of tending to and taping her of her own plant, um, but is not incapacitated, maybe doesn't have the capability to maybe handle her estate issues as is in here. I mean, there's a big difference.
I think that this definition of incapacitated adult is the extreme case. So, if a medical provider determines somebody incapacitated, then they lack the sufficient understanding or capacity to make or communicate responsible decisions. Um, it's not a person in a wheelchair. So, um, so I think this is a... This is the extreme definition of incapacitated. So, if a medical provider believes that an individual does have sufficient capacity to understand, um, and make and communicate responsible decisions, then they're not going to determine them incapacitated, and therefore, they wouldn't follow the end of this rule. So, if the person really doesn't understand, until if Ms. Lister's mother has been diagnosed as incapacitated by a medical provider by the statutory definition of incapacitated adult, then she would not be able to, without the assistance of a caregiver, cultivate marijuana.
Senator Hassel then represent...
Thank you. I really like Mr. Albert's suggestion about the access piece, and I wonder, hearing, having heard Ms. Lister's concerns, whether you think there's some language that can be crafted that would accommodate that access? And if so, who should be willing to do it?
Senator Hassel, I think that the, um, by allowing the incapacitated adult to access the cultivation location absent a caregiver or a... I think it's only caregiver, but it's also that can use a guardian, a power attorney. It creates the same risk that the department is concerned about without that. So, um, I think that an incapacitated person should be accompanied when the enclosed lock facility is accessed and it becomes an enclosed unlocked facility to prevent exploitation. I don't see right ground there.
Okay, I see. You don't see that. Thank you.
Representative Heimerson, do you...
Yeah, I think we're just wrestling the incapacitated adult word is... There are all sorts of problems, and I'm not sure how... I'm not... I don't... If we go through this, you know, in medical... The medical world with capacity, and who has capacity, and the question is, what are you asking a question for? Capacity for what? And so, I'm not sure... You're saying it's not an easy word... It's not an easy thing to define. But the word incapacitated adult reaches a level that's pretty low level where I think the risk of exploitation would be met. And I need to find some other language, but I'm wrestling how that definition would happen.
Representative Sanderson? Okay. I guess I wonder one... One idea, so if we have the language about incapacitated adult being able to access while being accompanied, but then if we also... I mean, I wonder if we put something in there, if essentially, if we're talking about... You know, if there was some... If there was a doctor who was... If there was a medical professional who was willing to sign off that their assessment they got had capacity to do this particular activity, I wonder if that's one way, you know? Rather than trying to us here try to define different levels of incapacity, if we just let that's the medical professional to... To make an determination on? That's just an idea I'm throwing out. Representative Sanderson?
Thank you. When I first read this bill, um... When I think of incapacitated adults, the reasoning that I originally thought maybe the law should get out in 2012 was because they didn't want somebody to be taken advantage of by being a grower, having someone taking advantage of their being able to grow, et cetera. And maybe that's part of it. But the one thing that never occurred to me, and I'm still having a hard time reconciling my mind around, is the fact that, um, we're going to do this, and maybe the example is because they could be potentially a target. I mean, my goodness, we... I mean, my goodness, we, it, it just doesn't make sense to me that because someone is incapac... is incapacitated and could potentially be a target for someone stopping by to steal something, that, that they should be punished and maybe have something that they really enjoy and is quite therapeutic taken away, in maybe some cases. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that. The piece I was originally thinking about, that maybe someone would be taking advantage of them and their ability to grow a certain number of plants as a patient, that piece I understand. So I, I would really like some more time to work on this, because I understand where I'm coming from, but I think we need to be clear on exactly what level of incapacitation that, that they...
And I would just also add, the department is not concerned about cultivating doral bushes here. So if you want to have therapy of gardening, I wonder why asking marijuana things?
Well, if that's their medicine, and they're able to do that, and it helps their condition, is my response to that. But, I mean, I mean, think about it, if you have someone who's incapacitated, they could be a target for anything. What about any pharmaceuticals they have in their home, et cetera? Are you going to stop them from going to be able to have the pharmaceuticals in their home, and somebody isn't there to watch them? I mean, that opens a whole broad door of something that I'm just not comfortable with.
Additional discussion? Representative Tean?
Yeah, again, I don't think I can support this bill in its current form, if there's a, if there's, if people want to table this and look at, I, I, I would support that, because, again, I think, I understand, you know, the concern here, and I'd like to, like to, to alleviate that concern.
Senator Haskell?
Move aside and be tabled?
Okay.
Moved in second by Senator Haskell and Representative Sandersen on the side of the table. All in favor of motion to table, can you raise your hand? All right. I'll oppose. I have this table.
It was a straw, though.
I'll, I'll, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that in her notes, Annie makes it, puts an asterisk by your vote that it was... So, 766, this is an act to require medical marijuana primary caregiver cultivating in a residential building to obtain an electric permit. Now we've kept you waiting, Representative Heimerson.
Might be everyone that showed up today.
All right, one of us, I do. We have gold stars.
Only the most leaky may have gold stars on their...
All right, so LD 766, this bill, an act to require a medical marijuana primary caregiver cultivating in a residential building to obtain an electrical permit. This bill amends the main medical use of marijuana acts required, beginning January 2nd, 2016, a primary caregiver to obtain an electrical permit from an electrical inspector prior to cultivating in a residential building. The text for this bill as proposed is on page eight of the packet. There's a, it's, under the cultivation of marijuana subsection, there's language explaining the, the process, and I wanted to also make the committee aware that during the testimony, the sponsor said that we may want to amend this bill to require caregivers and/or dispensaries when making their initial application through the department to demonstrate compliance with section of Title 32. And I saw that there was also, in this purple packet that I provided, attachment number three, in the letter providing information from the department, there's some proposed language in here as well. And so I don't know if the committee would like to hear from the sponsor. I know that he's available here, but I was... Present any questions?
He's only waited around all day.
Thank you. Number four, District 25, Wyndham. All right, so, okay, so after, after speaking with the folks, currently, currently businesses act to get an electrical, electrical permit, that's, that's all part of having a commercial business. So I think that there was some concern, and you might also have this leather, letter sitting here from the Department of Professional and Financial Regulation, right here. So essentially, they talked about, you know, the, the need for an electrical permit already being in statute, but they do say that it's probable that some sort of, like, medical marijuana growers are unaware of these circumstances, and it says the electrical installations they use are required to be installed pursuant to provisions of the Electrical Code by an electrician. So they're saying that they'd be happy to work collaboratively with, with HHS on, on putting these permits out there. So what, what HHS has done is, is they've come back and they, they figured out how they'd like to have it within the statute, that, you know, and it, it affects two different spots. You can see that they've got it under 22 MRS subsection 2, 2425. And that, that seems to be dealing only, only with the cultivators. And then it looks like in another section of the statute, they have it dealing just specifically with, with the dispensaries. And, and what it would do essentially, or what I'm looking at, is it would require them to, to, to show, to show, show a permit, you know, before getting their, their identification card or their dispensary, dispensary registrations certificate. So they're, they're just proposing putting it somewhere else in statute, aside from where the revisers office had decided to put it originally.
Representative Burstein?
I just wonder, does this mean that, then, say I apply for a permit?